Good evening and welcome to our regularly scheduled school board meeting for February 14th. At this time, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairperson Magnuson is not available this evening, so as vice chair, I will be running the meeting in place of her. At this time, we are going to approve the agenda. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda today. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as outlined?
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Sutchen, a second by Art. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six-zero vote. Next up is recognition by the school board, our favorite time of the meeting where we get to recognize the achievements happening in our district. At this time, I'd like to welcome Chris McDonald to the podium to discuss and introduce the state debate tournament champions in policy debate. Mr. McDonald.
All right. It's Mary Krieger's favorite part of the board meeting. She likes when they come up here. I first want to start with Happy Valentine's Day to everyone and including the entire school board and Superintendent Mary Krieger. I know that when you were growing up, you thought to yourself, this is how I wanted to spend my Valentine's Day, was here honoring students, though, is a good thing. Debate, as you all know, is a really difficult activity. It's an activity that pits the students against students from across, not only our own state, but across the country. And the two of the gentlemen standing right next to me got their start in eighth grade, which is unusual in the world of high school debate. We usually don't have very many eighth graders, but they really wanted to join the team. So they did. And they had go- goals. Oh, well, there we go. They had goals right away. They set themselves some very high goals. And one of those goals was to win the state championship. And they, as sophomores last year, were in the final round and lost the final round to the Minneapolis South's team, one half of whom we debated again this year in the final round, and this year we prevailed. So this year, they prevailed. But you cannot prevail in this activity without a lot of support. And that support begins here at District 196 with the school board, with our leadership, starting at the top with Superintendent Krieger. That support is integral to us even having an activity like debate or all of the other activities that students can find a place to belong and to learn and to develop and to grow together. And it goes all the way down into the building and the parents, but it starts with the students themselves. They have to want to learn and to develop the skills. These are incredibly important skills as we move through our world in terms of the information that's necessary to process and to go through all of that and to understand how all of that comes together and to analyze and synthesize evidence in their way. They have many, many tournaments left to go yet, and they're only juniors, so it's quite possible we could be back here again celebrating another state championship, but we'll worry about that later. This coming weekend, they'll be debating at Harvard, though we won't be in Cambridge. We'll be here at Eagan online on a Zoom, competing against teams from across the country. And then a few weeks later, they'll be at the National Debate Coaches Association's national championship and the Tournament of Champions a month later. And then, of course, the national tournament this summer in Louisville, Kentucky, which is the first time that we are hopeful that we will actually be traveling and going to a tournament in person. So I present to you Archon Sen and Eric Lee, the 2022 state champions in policy debate. Walk by and just kind of say thank you to them. You don't, no, other side. Oh.
Congratulations, awesome achievement. Congratulations, awesome. Thank you so much for coming. Awesome.
Wonderful, and we hope we do see you again next year also. Next up, I'd like to welcome Greta Thomas to the podium to introduce our state debate tournament runner-up in public forum. Ms. Thomas.
Hello. Good evening, Vice Chairperson Johnson and the school board members and Superintendent Mary Krieger. My name is Greta Thomas, and I have been a debate coach at Eastview High School since 2013, when I was 19, so quite a while now, but not as long as Chris McDonald. And first, I would like to thank the school board and our District 196 community for their continued support of the arts over the years. We see firsthand, and I get the immense privilege of seeing firsthand, how important the arts are for the development of young people, and I'm tremendously grateful to be in a supportive school district in that regard, so thank you. I am here to introduce you to two members of our team who I coached alongside Todd Herring and Alex Baker. Isaiah Dial and Ishan Qureshi, both joined by their families today, have been members of our team for the last four years. Isaiah has been a state finalist for the last three, and Ishan has been a state finalist for the last two years. They're incredibly impressive debaters. They've both shown outstanding dedication to their teammates, proven themselves to be voracious researchers, and above all else, eagerly worked to improve their skills, which paid off tremendously this past January. We are very proud of their latest accomplishment. Ishan and Isaiah earned second place while competing in public forum debate at the state competition. Isaiah and Ishan wanted to acknowledge the support of their teammates, especially state quarterfinalists Malaya Galindas and Kaden Hubbs, who were particularly supportive on a very challenging day. We look forward to their upcoming performance this summer at the national tournament, where they will be one of a few teams representing Minnesota, and we're very proud of their work.
Wonderful. Next up on the agenda is superintendent's recognition. Superintendent Krieger.
Okay. We heard from a few of our outstanding students, but I have many more outstanding students to share with you tonight. Congratulations to Catalina Decker of Eagan High School and Leighton Simmering of Rosemont High School on being selected the Region III Double-A finalist for the Academics, Arts, and Athletics Award for the 2122 school year. The Triple-A goes to nominated seniors with a 3.0 or higher grade point average who participate in athletic and fine arts programs and exhibit exemplary citizenship and the highest standards of sportsmanship and conduct. Each high school in the state can nominate one senior boy and girl for the award. Catalina and Leighton were selected as representatives for Region III Double-A. The state Triple-A recipients, one girl and one boy in Class A and A Double-A, will be selected this spring from the list of nominees. The other Triple-A school nominees from District 196 are Sarah McDivitt and Ryan Cordella of Apple Valley High School, Arlen Hagenberg of Eagan High School, Jasmine Hyder and Isaiah Dalzell of Eastview High School, and Alexa Ratzloff of Rosemont High School. And congratulations to Apollo Ose of Apple Valley High School on being selected a 2021-22 Excellence in Community Education and Leadership Award recipient representing Region III Double-A. Also sponsored by the Minnesota State High School League, the Excel Award recognizes high school juniors who are active in fine arts and athletic activities, who demonstrate leadership qualities and who are model citizens in their community. Each high school in the state can nominate one junior boy and girl for the Excel Awards. Two recipients are selected from each of the eight competitive regions in the state for both Class A and Double-A schools. The other Excel Award nominees from District 196 are Melina Solocruz of Apple Valley High School, Alicia Awaname and Archon Sen of Eagan High School, Allison Nathan and Jack Hanson of Eastview High School, and Maya Sanamo and Patrick Grunkley of Rosemont High School. I said there were a lot, more to come. Congratulations to Rosemont High School Isaiah Chirren on being selected to the prestigious National Youth Orchestra of the United States. Isaiah, who plays oboe auditioned in November and was recently notified of his selection. As a member of the National Youth Orchestra, Isaiah will have the chance to come together with an outstanding group of peers from across the country, learn from world-class faculty and guest artists, and serve as a cultural ambassador for the United States while traveling and performing abroad. The program runs from July 16th through August 11th and begins with a two-week residence at Purchase College, a performance at Carnegie Hall, and a tour of Europe with concerts in Amsterdam, Berlin, and Lucerne. Congratulations to the cast and crew of Eagan High School's one-act play Sense and Sensibility on winning the Section III Double-A competition and qualifying to perform at the State One Act Play Festival in St. Paul earlier this month. And congratulations and good luck to the District 196 students who qualified to compete in the state Alpine and Nordic Ski Tournaments that will be held later this week in Beowabik. In Alpine, the Eagan High School girls qualified as a team, and in Nordic, the combined District 196 boys team and the combined Eagan/Eastview girls team both qualified for the team competition. Next, I would like to recognize our caring peer professionals in District 196. The last week in January was Peer Professionals Recognition Week in Minnesota. Peer professionals work directly with students on academics, behavior, functional, and social skills. They develop healthy, supportive relationships with students and contribute to student success in school every day. Thank you to our peer professionals for the important work that you do in ensuring our students are educated to reach their full potential. And last, but certainly not least, I want to recognize our outstanding school board members in advance of school board recognition week later this month. We're extremely lucky to have incredibly knowledgeable and caring school board members in District 196. The seven members combined have 72 years of service on our board, and they are Chairperson Jackie Magnuson, Vice Chairperson Corey Johnson, Treasurer Art Coulson, Clerk Sutchen Isaacs, Director Joel Ibray, and Directors Sakhoudin Mohammed and Bianca Vernig. Please join me in thanking our school board members for their service and commitment to the children and families of District 196. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda is our special communication request portion of the meeting. People who would like to speak during special communication requests must submit a form at least five days in advance of the meeting. Ten speakers receive up to four minutes to share comments. If there are more than ten requests, a lottery is conducted to determine the ten speakers. Speakers may not allot their time to others. We use a timer for public comment and will remind speakers when they have 30 seconds remaining. We expect speakers to finish their remarks when their time expires. Speakers are also reminded not to share complaints about specific employees or make inappropriate comments. Opinions shared during the public comment portion of the meeting do not necessarily represent the views of the school board or the district. The audience is expected to be calm, civil, and not disrupt speakers from being heard. Speakers, when you come to the podium, please state your name and your connection to the district. Our first speaker for special communication request is Michelle Blanch.
Good evening. My name is Michelle, and I have five children, four currently attending schools within District 196. I would like to begin tonight by reading to you a quote from a local school board that gave parents the final choice in their children's health decisions for COVID-19. Quote, "We will support and communicate the recommendations of public health agencies while allowing families and staff the personal choice on whether to follow the recommendations." End quote. School board, those exact words actually came from you in July of 2021 in a parent email shortly after having received around 3,000 feedback surveys from district families concerning your COVID operational plan for the school year that left masks optional. Why then did you not provide an additional feedback survey for families before mandating masks the week before school started? Instead, you hastily pulled the rug from under the families in our district when you gave us mere days to prepare for any amount of fear, concern, or anxiety this might have produced in our children. In fact, I haven't heard much concern, if any, from you, school board, and asking how our students are feeling or doing by wearing masks all day. Nowhere on your COVID dashboard is it tracking data for a child's mental health and well-being during this time. Nowhere does it look into how their learning is being impacted during this time. Nowhere does it study the effects from not being able to see one another's full faces or the social awkwardness this produces for them during this time. The CDC data is clearly showing children are indeed not at high risk for hospitalizations or deaths from COVID and have mostly mild or asymptomatic symptoms with a 99.99% survival rate. By tracking Dakota County case transmissions as the only measure for mandating masks, you are completely overlooking how COVID affects our children directly. It is a known fact that children are not the ones at high risk for serious illness from COVID. Why then should they be the ones mandated to wear masks? I firmly believe my children will be safe in school without a mask, even when there is an exceedingly high case transmission as we have today, but yet you have taken away my parental right to choose what is best for them in this matter with a one-size-fits-all sweeping mandate. Parents should not have to wait until there is a moderate case transmission before you give us back control on whether or not to mask our children. The CDC only offers guidance and recommendations on masking, and yet you are only offering mandates on masking. Why? Look at Farmington School District. They currently do not have a mask mandate. Are they being reckless? No. Strangely enough, their case counts don't look much different from our case counts. Let's look at data from schools across the country without mask mandates. Ironically, similar outcomes. We now have excellent therapeutics and vaccines for all school attending children. When can we, as a district, move forward and stop forcing mandates on our families? Furthermore, are requiring face masks the only option we can come up with to avoid a quarantine for exposed, healthy staff and children? Where even is the scientific evidence to back up this requirement? The science and the CDC guidance for COVID are continuously changing. Perhaps this issue needs to be looked into as well. School board, there are risks to everything in life, and parents should absolutely have the right to assess their own child's risk of developing serious illness from COVID and decide for themselves whether their child needs to wear a mask for extra protection, especially when they are healthy. What a bold move, but one that is in your direct power to change. It is time to send out another feedback survey to hear whether your district families are in favor of dropping the mask mandates. If another survey won't be sent out, perhaps concerned families can email you and let you know their thoughts directly. Again, allow me to remind you of your message to the parents in July when you were honoring the parents' right to choose what is best for their children. Quote, "We will support and communicate the recommendations of public health agencies while allowing families and staff the personal choice on whether to follow the recommendations." End quote. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Our next speaker for special communication request is not here with us tonight, so we will call up the next speaker, Rachel Match. Excuse me, please. We have a speaker that's about to speak. Thank you.
My name is Rachel. I'm a proud alumni of District 196, Apple Valley High graduate of 2002, 2002, a parent of a child, attending kindergartner, and a healthcare provider. Of all my years growing up in this district, I've never jumped standing up here tonight in front of you all to say, remove the masks immediately. According to OSHA, a face mask is a loose-fitting device that does not seal tightly, therefore doesn't provide a reliable level of protection from inhaling airborne particles such as COVID-19. They are not considered respiratory protection, states OSHA. In healthcare, the purpose of a mask is when worn by a patient suspected or confirmed with an illness which intends to reduce the amount of large infectious particles released someone ill. Our children are not patients, and you, as a school board and governing entity, do not have the right to treat our children as patients. These are our children. Masks serve no purpose in a classroom but impact our child's mental health and connection negatively to their education. So while OSHA adapts the CDC recommendations for wearing masks indoor for all staff and students, it is written as recommended or should required, meaning a choice. Let us, parents, make that choice. Not a board or government. As a healthcare provider, my colleagues and I wear a fitted N95, an ARP, or a PAPR for a very short-term period when I face ill patients, and I'm trained how to dawn and daf when in isolation rooms. I wear my respirator for as little as 10 minutes, up to one hour at the most, then I remove professionally to avoid a contamination. These types of respirators are the only types of masks that effectively keep you safe. You will have to layer as many 16 masks of these to be equivalent to a N95. Masks have more risk and harm than benefits for our children in school. Children are wearing masks more than eight hours a day. My child does not know the difference to take his mask off to blow his nose, take a breath, cough, or sneeze appropriately. He comes home from school and his mask is soaking wet, and no KN95s are not the answer because they cause impairments. You are forcing to cover their faces and hide emotions to connect with classmates and teachers. The impact it has done to this generation with their mental health and impairments has increased, and it's only going to get worse. You can't tell me that they like wearing masks. No child likes to wear a mask, especially for eight hours a day. Just the other day, my son, who is a kinder- kindergartner, told me he wanted to see his friend's face in class. He wants to see her smile and not when eating lunch. There are over 100 peer-reviewed studies that have been published prior to COVID that do not support that masks are effective. Show me your data that displays mask-wearing is effective in schools over the last two years, because I haven't seen anything. Only cases have gone up and longer mandates. This district uses the mask mandate by cases of the entire Dakota County population. The transmission rate percentage is inaccurate and unjust by PCR false positives, double testing errors, and collects data of all ages of the lifespan. Mandating mask wear by the entire population is irrelevant, far-fetched, and downright outrageous. Children have over 98% to 99% surviving. Influenza is just as contagious, yet our school districts never implied a mask. COVID will never go away. It's part of our life. Enough is enough. What about your SRF funds? Well, we know we are the fourth-largest district requesting over $19 million is concerning for the third round. You beyond doubled your spending bill from the second SRF fund. I can't spend your spending because it's under process. It states that 20% needs to be spent for lost student learning time and 80% to any activity. So...
Ma'am, sorry. Your time is up. Ma'am? Ma'am? You're... Ma'am? Ma'am? I'm sorry, but I'm sorry, but your four minutes is up. Ma'am? I'm sorry. I appreciate your feedback. Your four minutes is up. Ma'am? Thank you. Our next speaker for special communication request is Neil Match.
Before I begin, I just have one quick request. I suffer from dyslexia and have my whole life. Mind if I have a 67 extension, please?
I'm sorry. I couldn't quite figure this out.
I suffer from dyslexia. I have my whole life. You know, all is very difficult for me, and I'm asking for 67, please.
Let's just see how, we have to give four minutes to each person, but let's see how it goes. I'm not gonna, if there's problems pronouncing, I want you to get your thoughts out, so...
May I begin? My name is Neil, Neil Match. I'm a resident taxpayer and father of this district. I apologize in advance if I come off harsh, but as you know, Papa Bears can get pretty fired up when they feel their cubs are in danger. I'm here to talk about masks and all other COVID mandates that this board has put into place. Before I do that, I'd like to remind you all that you all work for us. We don't work for you. You are the managers of the school system. The people are the bosses. We pay the taxes. We are the parents. We are the voters. You are here to serve our children and make sure that they are given and getting the best education and learning experience possible. So give our kids just that. Drop all the mandates immediately. It's time to get back to normal so our children can experience normalcy at school, like I did, like you did. Let our kids go to school, be with their friends, learn, soak in as much experienced information and information as possible without restrictions. It's time to move on from COVID, and it's been a long time overdue. I could stand up here and talk for hours telling you what we all know about masks. Masks clearly don't work. They never have, they never will. Even our governor says so. I could talk about all the harm they do, dirty, soaked with vapor spit and snot every day. Most people, especially kids, don't handle masks properly like medical professionals do in a hospital. I could talk about breathing in your own exhaust fumes all day, which compromises one's cognitive thinking. Making someone wear a mask is desperate, is deprivation of a right. It causes wrong or harm by limiting oxygen intake. Everyone deserves to breathe. None of you are medical doctors. You have no right to make any medical decisions for anyone's child, not to mention the 20 state code violations that you're breaking by having these mandates in place. If you, if you don't know what those violations are, here's the list. At the last meeting, six of seven people spoke out against a COVID mandate request. You all voted against what the people wanted. That's not doing your job as a board member. You can't have your minds made up before the people state our opinions and concerns. That's doing what you want, not what the people want, and that's wrong. You are seated here to serve our children's best interests. Restricting our children's ability to breathe is not what we, the people, want for our kids. Restricted breathing clearly restricts learning. I'm not asking, I'm demanding. I am demanding, we, the people, the taxpayers, the parents, the voters, your bosses, we are all demanding the mask mandate and all other COVID mandates be lifted here tonight effective immediately. We want our kids to have the best education possible with the least amount of anxieties, frustration, and frustration that comes from wearing a mask and other restrictions. No one likes to wear a mask. No one likes to have trouble breathing. No one likes to see no smiling faces. No one likes to have unnecessary problems that can be easily avoided. No one likes to be told what to do when you live in a free country. I've been in contact with an attorney. Myself and others are ready and willing to move forward against claims on the board and each one of you individually. But let's not take that path. Let's not take that path. Do the right thing. Do what we want. Do your jobs as a board member. Do what's best for our kids. Stop making them suffer. Life can be tough. Life is precious and short. Don't let our kids miss out on life's priceless details at school. Don't make their lives any harder than it already is. Remove the mask mandate now.
Okay.
Sir? Thank you for letting me speak here tonight with the mandates now.
Our last speaker under special communication request tonight is Travis Anderson. Our last speaker under special communication request tonight is Travis Anderson.
My name is Travis Anderson. I have three children in the school district. I only heard one thing tonight I completely disagree with, and that is that no survey is needed for medical freedom. According to the FDA, face masks and surgical masks do not prevent small particles. The Mayo Clinic no longer allows cloth masks in their hospitals. The CDC finally acknowledges that SARS-CoV-2 transmits through aerosols. Once a mask is touched, it should be discarded. I've got a hard time keeping my five-year-old's fingers out of her nose. Regarding the CDC's mask research, there's three studies on masks on the CDC. Have you looked at them? I've provided them for you tonight. The first one is a clustered randomized trial, which is the best one they have because that's science, clustered random. It came out of Bangladesh. The study concluded that efficacy of masks is less than 1%. In other words, a school that tests positive with 100 cases maskless compared to a school with masks will only have 99 cases, a whole savings of one. There's a study used right here, this one. This is probably my favorite. Have you seen this graph before? 1,800 some odd participants were included in a survey. That sounds like research. And in this survey, 86 people concluded that they never wore a mask in public settings. 86. You live in a country of 330 million people, and 86 people get to decide the efficacy of masks? Absurd. According to your own website, last week, 148 people on Monday were in isolation, children due to COVID, which is similar to the Dakota County research. If masking worked for our school, this graph, all comes from the Minnesota Department of Health, this graph right here, this is an age graph. School-aged kids would look different than non-school-aged kids because non-school-aged kids aren't mandated to wear masks. But the graphs look almost identical. Actually, they look worse for school-aged kids. I wonder why. Let's talk about health. It's sad when a child dies. Did you know that for every one child that's died in Minnesota due to COVID, 73 children have died of something else? 23 have died of an accident, some of them falling downstairs or hitting their head on the playground. You would have better luck putting a frickin' helmet on my kid than a mask. School-aged children are five times more likely to be hospitalized due to mental illness. Five times more likely. Even if masks worked 100% effective, you still shouldn't mandate it on kids because they can't keep their damn hands off it, and it doesn't affect them the same as it does adults. The moment that vaccines were available to all of you people, all of the teachers, all of the administrators, you should have lifted the mask mandate, even if it worked. I would love to see you dig into the data, actually look at the data I provided for you, and I'd love to see it made public. I pulled apart the CDC's research. It is hogwash. It's horrible. It is not science. I've got two questions. If you're unwilling to lift the mask mandate, you have to prove to me that masks are better than not masks, and I can't imagine you doing that. And second question, does our mask mandate have anything to do with the $19 million we're still waiting on approval? Thank you.
Today on the consent agenda, we have minutes of the January 10th regular school board meeting, minutes of the January 24th special school board meeting, gifts, grants, advertising, treasures report for December 2021, summary of claims for December 21 AM. Excuse me! Excuse me! Members of the audience, excuse me. I, I, excuse me, excuse me, members of the audience. I just have, is this the example that we want to be setting for our children? Because this is not how we are supposed to conduct ourselves. I need to get through the agenda. All right, I'm gonna call a 10-minute recess. All right, on the consent agenda today, we have the minutes of the January 10th school board meeting, minutes of the January 24th school board meeting, gifts, grants, advertising, treasures report for December 2021, summary of claims for December 2021, schedule of investments for December 2021, revenues of expenditures, personnel, resolution pursuant to Minnesota Statute 35466, qualifying part-time teachers, student-teacher agreement 2022, roof rehabilitation, unified network access, ship school wellness contract, application for cooperative sponsorship for girls lacrosse, application for cooperative sponsorship for boys lacrosse. Are there any items we would like to remove from the consent agenda today?
I make the motion?
I, uh, one moved to approve by Suchin, second by Art. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye. Opposed? Consent agenda passes on a 6-0 vote. Next is old business, and I would like to call up Kaya Brown to discuss, to discuss connections preschool fees. Excuse me, excuse me. This is, we do have some business we do need to get through tonight. It is, it is, it is time for Ms. Brown to discuss her portion of the agenda. We do have some business we need to get through. I do appreciate hearing from everyone tonight, but we do have very important business that we do have to get through, okay? And we do need to be able to hear from our speakers. Go ahead.
Good evening, Vice Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Krieger. I'm sharing with you tonight the second reading of the proposed connections preschool fee increases for the 2022-2023 school year. These proposed fees are based on a sliding fee scale correlating to family income and size and reflect a 10% increase from the current year while also being lower than our neighboring and like-sized districts. This is the second reading, so I kindly request your approval tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Good? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the connect, this is the action item, do I have a motion to approve? I hear a motion from Suchin, a second by Joel. All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Thank you, Kaya. All right. Under new business, we have Ms. Coyle to present, uh, policy 502, student transfers.
Good evening, Vice Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I am before you tonight with new business, taking a look at policy 502.
Excuse me, excuse me, members of the audience, we do need to hear from Ms. Coyle to present on the next item of new business tonight, on student transfers.
Thank you, Vice Chairperson Johnson. I am before you tonight on policy 502, student transfers. There's a variety of relatively minor changes to the student transfer policy that are intended to take into account the board's action on December 13th of 2021, approving attendance area adjustments. Tonight is simply a new business item. I will be back before you on old business on March 14th to look at these changes in greater detail. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, otherwise I'll see you on March 14th.
Very good. Thank you very much. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience?
Yeah.
Any, any questions or comments related to policy 502, student transfers? Do you have a question related to policy 502? If you have a policy related to 502, you can come up into the podium, please. Any, any comments related to the agenda item?
I was gonna ask, because I was here last time, remember? We spoke about the disclosure of vaccination status within the school system, right? And apparently that the judge of the court system had shut that down, so that is no longer being imposed, correct? Great, okay. That was my question.
Sure, yep. No, when we voted on that, sir, it was only if federal regulations allowed, so when that wasn't, when that did get changed in federal court, we were not imposing that, correct?
Okay, perfect. So I think, quickly for a couple seconds here, I think most people can see you're pretty frustrated, right? We're asking that you guys really consider this. I mean, really. Go, go, go home tonight. I mean, maybe now, everybody obviously wants it done now, you know? And I think that would be great if you could. I'm not sure exactly how that works. You know what I mean? But do you guys have children?
Yes, many of the board members do.
Do you like your children wearing masks?
Yeah. So, sir, so, one thing here. So, we can...
I'm sorry, Corey, I really have a hard time hearing you.
I know, it's difficult to talk over the noise, I, I know. So, there are a couple things, when we do do comments during agenda items that do need to be related, but I will just answer your question real quick. To that point, all the feedback we get, every piece of email, I know I, I know most of the board members always read. Appreciate the feedback and the people that came to speak tonight. We do have an agenda, we do have to get through this, very important business, so we have to get to the end so that the district can continue to interact. Right now, we heard a lot of feedback today, and right now the mask was not on the agenda today, but it is something that we're gonna continue to be looking at. I appreciate the feedback, but we have to get through our agenda tonight.
You can understand the frustration, all right?
I'm sorry, what?
You can understand the frustration, all right?
I can definitely understand and hear the frustration, absolutely.
So do we put that on the agenda now? Can you? I mean, you guys all...
We have to get through the agenda.
You're making the rules right now, right?
I have to follow the rules in accordance with the board and the policy. That's even, yep. Thank you, Jill. Yep. All right. Next, I would like to call up Christopher Onyango-Robisha to go over the 2022-2023 capital expenditure budget.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here. I'm gonna talk about the capital budget for the 2023 school year. I'm Christopher Onyango-Robisha, and I'm, thank you. So our capital process includes, that is presented tonight, includes two separate funding sources. The first one being the operating capital, the second one being the long-term facilities maintenance. We also know this as LTFM. The operating capital purchases furniture, fixtures, equipment. We also use it for building improvements. LTFM, long-term facilities maintenance, funds our health and safety projects, repairs and maintenance. So the way I would ask you to think of these two funds is operating capital purchases, new items, while LTFM is used to provide for maintenance and replacement of things that are already in place. Operating capital includes state aid of 4.7 million, and then there's a levy component of 8 million to that. What's presented in the resource allocation document also includes expenditures for curriculum, purchases during the year, lease payments, building allocations, the total for that being 13.9 million. We are estimating a fund balance at the end of June 2023 to be 1.5 million. Long-term facilities maintenance includes state aid as well. There's 4 million allocated for that. Poppy pill allocation for the LTFM is $380. There's a levy component also for LTFM, and that's $8 million. Total funds, we're estimating, including the June 30th 2020 fund balance carryover, 12.1 million for LTFM. Our planned expenditures includes health and safety, includes mechanical and roof replacements, the total for that being $12 million. We anticipate a fund balance of $110,000 at the end of June 30th of 2023. We are going to prepare a detailed expenditure report, which includes both what the buildings are preparing for for next year, and we will be bringing this for board action at the April 11th school board meeting.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Are there any questions related to the capital expenditure report from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? All right, we'll see you on April 11th, Christopher. Thank you. All right. Oh, gosh. Under other action item, I would like to call up Michael Bosoni, Lisa Turgen, and Nicole Lontree-Brobold to go over the Native American Parent Advisory Committee Resolution of Concurrents.
What? Oh, I'm not gonna do that. Nope. Good evening, Vice Chairperson Corey Johnson, school board members, Superintendent Krieger. I'm here tonight representing our Native American Parent Advisory Committee and our American Indian Ed program. In January, they voted a vote of concurrence unanimously to approve the education being given to their children. They have included an overview of the program in a PowerPoint for you, along with recommendations for the following year. We ask for your approval of that tonight.
This is another action item tonight, is your motion to approve. I heard a motion by Joel, a second by Suchin. All those in favor of approving motion is outlined? Say aye. Opposed? Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Next, I'd like to welcome Chris McDonald back to the podium to go over National Speech and Debate Education Day.
She's just entering now.
You have to follow the agenda. If we're gonna keep going, we have to follow the agenda.
Chris, we're gonna go really short. You're back. All right. Thank you once again to the school board and to Superintendent Mary Krieger. We are here to again, once again, celebrate Speech and Debate Day on March 4th, so we look for a consent to that resolution.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments from the audience on National Speech and Debate Education Day? Seeing none, any questions from board members? This is another action item, is your motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion from Joel, and a second from Suchin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries on a 6-0 vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, if, if there is going to be, the board has to follow the agenda, and if, listen, listen, if there are going to be, listen, listen, if there are going to be any comments regarding our mask mandate tonight, it would happen at the end of the agenda. We do need to get through the items on the agenda before we get to the end, and the more disruptions we have, the more we won't have a chance to do that. This time, Mr. Stodds, would you please go over the reciprocal easement and operating agreement by Autism Opportunities Foundation?
Okay. Chair Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, members of the board, I am before you tonight to request approval of a reciprocal easement agreement with the Minnesota Autism Center for the Silver Bell Learning Center. As you may or may not be aware, there's a common road that serves both their parking lot, our parking lot. The easement would allow us to split the costs on any maintenance on that road with the Minnesota Autism Center in addition to a private drainage and utility easement, which again, for maintenance and repairs, would be split evenly between the district and the Minnesota Autism Center. So I'd entertain any questions you might have and request approval of the agreement.
Thank you very much. At this point, this is an other action item. Are there any questions or comments related to the reciprocal easement from the audience? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments relating to the reciprocal easement agreement by the board? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Movement by Joel.
Second.
Second by Art. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes on a 6-0 vote. Thank you, Mr. Stodds. Next up, I'd like to welcome Mr. Pedersen to go over staffing allocation guidelines. Mr. Pedersen.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, Superintendent Krieger. Before you tonight is the staffing allocation for fiscal year 2023. On behalf of the administration, I recommend that you approve the fiscal year 2023 staffing allocation guidelines in your packet. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Are there any questions or comments from the audience related to staffing allocations? Seeing none, are there any... Seeing none, are there any questions from the board relating to the staffing allocation guidelines? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Movement, motion by Joel, second by Art. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six-zero vote. All right. Next, under other action is a calendar change for 2021 or 2022. Mr. Pedderstoon.
I'll refer to the exhibit, proposed calendar changes for 2022-23. They were initially approved at the December fourteenth, 2020 meeting, and I recommend that you approve the 2022-23 calendar changes that are in your packets this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have this time.
This is an action item, and I'll entertain a motion and a second. Movement by Joel.
Second.
Second by Art. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from the board? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a six-zero vote.
Thank you.
That brings us to board member and superintendent updates. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Pedderstoon. Are there any superintendent updates tonight? Are there any board member updates tonight? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Movement by Joel, second by Art. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on a six-zero vote. We are adjourned.